Mal lungi li ta sils board ra Social Security Administration agi mal merengasulu wel losa piwal mer ilang. Kedamadengel wase sell RPL 11-12, tya budget pillar FY2022. FY2022 am lo omu olira October 1, 2021, almo September 2022. Mang mlaaringia appropriation al mora Social Security ma amle korra intentro olbi rasa kadakantinyura osisi wel benefits. Igahida koramle understanding olbi raku rasa himo deliberated tel lulas mula. Mang amle ulmagi olra public hearing, mlaaringia public announcement raku miul mula newspaper, mlaaringia omsodela igahidal osisi wel benefits. Mang onitawase mema pota kawo dangele, mlaaringia language announcement, madiregal lotutela la alkuram lotal gibil ngod, mang girila arbekal adel mo understand igahidal waseng ngaram ngaragel kuramle mangoda mal volsa pela board ma administrationals now da igahid. Mati al hearing na vice adminis committee la senate, lubangela Social Security Administration altal yalsilsa mo omasaula sa egid. Mgaaringia Senator Isale, Vice Chairman na vice adminis committee, ma floor leader Senator Alabiel, ma Senator Andrew Tabalual, ma Senator Umi Isavau. Tiga himura at maril altal yalsils, okfuli yang moblatakal mora arbekal adel mula benefit SS, mang mo oklawada la rokultooy. Maktingo masegide Chairman na board de alikwa microphone al maskau magukamkura akmungasese me introduce sar atame do mu'ra hearing o malmasaula.
Oy, mal lungi li ta sils Chairman ma arbekal Senator San Gartyang. Kama ma kama aranglela boarda Gartyang agi ditewa ilang, ki short ra imo mgaaringia Heflin Bai, Vice Chairman na board, ma Terence Rulo, Secretary at Commissioner, ma Mr Satorua, Tara Trustee, and then andiregal Gartyang Administrator Social Security, houla italtul. Mang kumalmasaula tial teal, sap edel kok me moka wadinge, edik sera lastel ki mema da'adu enksera da'adu ulgirel sell budget de, semle budget hearing lta plaringi. Mang kato kuramlo kawo dangere igel kuraple tanga ngere ngin diuruleng kok longoda. Mang edik kutil teal ekh ulai bol saw da igel process ra omalay il legal opinion, ma timeline, samai gel wasetangara nga beneficiary sel momalaya igel supplemental benefits.
Nsa wle chair. So, mala waise Chairman, ala'ha mal korra 11-12, adi waisel dimla la'arsing 10-12, forgot, nding seyi del $50 sel mera SS. Ogore, let's start ra fiscal year 2018, egadu lungosi ra contribution 1%, egoh sel $50 sa Social Security, ya governmental mutal fund ra another 50. Mang kagaro sa misera kimu, nding nagim etataim nding nagimo dasul asing almutal mori nga additional 50. Magidul tirakar sel dimla omru ra ngara mongol ngara governmental kamiwa mlikotlo tabadiil mora roku'ul beneficiary. Mang milla mol mlsera kimu sel 50, ya iltawo dangin mora it sel benefit, dha'halbora benefit payi. Now, elha dem fast forwardan mer ilang, tial sel la'ar elanga di ulungus akli seyi del section ra 765, wel mo $100, edha'ha sel kuk additional udo dal may, udo da di 1.9 million. So, sera alme agi amre tial systema kama, ma mal time constraint, tiablo approving rasa September 29. Serada du enkuram netal gibil kagaro sa awaduwa blo dakawo dangele ngin nemne udoswa ma wase ndimo single payi, alsum kama lal tu, ndimowan, alsum kourior omu dha'ha molaringi, egadirego kadi imlo masa asing mora atre bela edha'ha atangotre belu. So, igahid el kuraple dakawo dangene, igahid nemne mora sumel change ra system. Now, sera 29 el tovda la, ya korana mu'elba ngaringi, namo dha'ha nde'kmu mugimgarari ngin, ngetiam aklo udo da kibom absorber ngi. So, makni aska da'adala'ha wa, msa kama le opinion tial waseng mal waise, li osisi wel sel before. Egolba ngi, kaga atay ma dimral ma akosod, makasi okay. Ak timol tirakar sel ul ottabadalela udo dra SS. Number one, alsum kari retire, egol kwaritari mentraga lotir klis sel formula basic benefit, amai gel fund ra earnings ra gau. Alsum kuma disability, egamlosme'ra early, egadiregal momalaringi lwa'atse seyi del ban. Alsum kuma surviving spouse, egamomalaringi gau ma dependents ra gau, lotir klis seyi del basic benefit ra mlamosme'el beim. El prorated, alsum kuma surviving, a child agirel ngua 15%, each child, egoh we, esel momde'la mora surviving spouse. A system ra before, asenorme sel mretire, maybe dataim mle average a two child, mang blo'el ngara 20% ya wanasixty. Ya alu'ula surviving spouse, asa siemel ngua benefit ra gau, gau ma dependent, tel ngalakar sel benefit, lblel entire ngin, entire, mentre ngel nosme' waise. Melas sel, mesera ngu, eme abogundasul asia gumel at tial 100, tietigal dependent child, sera dadu meeting, sada ngartay before aktil waseng ngaringa baby eta dependents arti. Sel bodo mu'urra eta dependents, ma ngal spouse, etiam la ya ngalakar tial benefit ra ngal nosme'era. A system albiak seyi del mechanism, ngirel di stop ngi. So, to make it fast, leki lltovda benefit ra November 1, ak dilor adra la'lasi. Dimla hal complete tial interpretation ngi, ak dilasigwa moreresearch ngi, engmome'ud dal may makasi okay. Whatever happen, ak ti ottabadi minha'ha'limisa, a retire ngua benefit ngi, ma disability, ma surviving spouse. In event, esel ngua surviving spouse, isegirel prorated ngi mar ngaligel. May egid el 3-10, minha'ha'limis sel November 1 benefit, ngaringa adjustment engu later. Mang agi multabadiya announcement, amal diul tirakar sel action agiblo me garingi. El wase yotabida 100, almo SS ama'ah ngusel 50, mang mo 100, edhi mobangel sel benefit ra gau. Sel molaringa amand, le se'ha fund ringa SS, el lobangela sel tal motungi, egobangela iti. Alsum kaudil kouriora, egalakati 1000 ra korer, engarmarik lin ngusel gau. And then, alsum $50 sel imo, sel the outside ra system, sel fund ringa ROP, seyi dahidi fund ringi. So, to avoid the short forra fund, akni aska si, baska ma'msel first quarter payment, esel 1.9, magi ngilo, intaim egotabida benefit esel November 1. Fast forwardan mer ilang, finally adra la'ha ma'mla, o misringi different, wase oy ngaringa formula SS, ngaringa lula SS, ndi tial funding, tial la, dha'halbol lwa katakli, el wase ngual treat tial supplemental, antap per sel benefit ra at, lengok dha'halsel bl earnings ra at. So, mang recommendation ngi, sing komdiregal seyi del lulokuning, asa alsum ngaringa adjustment engu riula, o mu'petriga idi dependents child. Seyi da agi nguramla moka wader ngaringi ilang, msa kama ngutal sa Chairman na kama, mukmu sesel girel seyi del fund ra elanga, kukke bom adjust ngira, igel month forward. Ndii, of course, sing kadamadengel wase sel ngaringa adjustment, agi retro ngin mor sel benefit, lme girel start ngi. So, adra la'adul hasid indaal maral, komdi mori tro itba. Sabi el ra adamel change ra system, egiku momru rita ida adjustment. So, it's not easy to change tial systema kama, it takes at least more than a month to do it. Sel da change, enggerdal chi'ga igero ku'ul part ngi, lina ngaringa tamalira calculation. Ayamal girel se, nding akumdas sing mal gira mal blakatak pasigi correct, agi confirm mayka, agi multabida tial benefit ne, fifty serira ra board, mha'direks. Nsa wle chair.
Tiam amount ra adjustment, kongli?
El altaim agi madengel losing ngara 25,000, ra amand, it's almost 300,000 additional in more antap per tial gibilam ururi. 300,000 er tiri galdi dependent child ra year. Almost 25,000 a month, just the number today, ndi kuklangarinya more eng come in, about 300 additional to what's already in the system, retiring, ma surviving, ma disability. Total funding tira rugil additional $50, 2.3 million. Se additional girela SS la absorber ngi.
Ndirengaringa mutal baby ra ke'el relating al morte tial, igahidal kuramlo announcement tamara?
Tia'ha ak mal agi mal recognize ourself, wasing it takes time, l'adjust ra system let yang, it's a computer program, il software, l'guk plada programaringi, l'guk marura imura computation ra benefit. Mesel guk pota change ra formula, engirel tega time, l'reprogram ringi, make sure eng correct. Legukalvol ma'wida kaskele, l'nsabi el tovda ngoda el lo'urma, agi mal understander sa egid el concern. Agi mal appreciate oursel, wase ya, ndiregal ngaringa bol edar ngi, ndi seyi tamal mle intentro olbi lasabi eramlosisi. And then, agi mle e'omdasak, msa kada motma'ge, kuk rulia, arulele, kada mo akamodeita igahid el cost of living adjustment, mang moti'ha'la, l'kama mal politician sa propose, emerqonge kuk mosi gaudod, ya urulenguk tiga udo, may hiku'ul matira SS. So, this has been going on for a long time. Mang girel motma'ge by rulia, tetele, waseng magaranga boarda SS, amosap el accessa benefit, ma udo dal mer mitngue, merqonge elo lianga cost of living adjustment. Ling alsum mang bekal borna senkyo mal ubing every other year, l'guk ta'anga propose ra tial al benefit adjustment, l'di tia'ha axual study, ndiregal lu'ulenguk mo koda kong deteriorate financial position ra Social Security. In the end, engirel guk mol mutal adjusta benefit almerio, lendak se edal afford. So, magi man daglia concern ra board ma SS, ndi agi onitl, wase do tirakli al la'al, do well, l'guk mlatu'v, lendak se edal dha'gal tirakral la'an. Pati drus seyi de Chairman, emal merengasulu.
Hallo kuk tokorati da'adu. Elang kama, ngaringi sel tokoranga paratal, wase like between a rock and a hard place, that's where we are right now. Magi taki dakurawa lont ma'm position ra board, ling komla roku'ul mal aswar sel korra axual study, momsu'ul walgatmakli a idibima, kolunda, kalunda? Oy, it puts our funding ratio, dingara 20% to 23%, that's really, it's sinking. We gonna find ourselves at the bottom of the ocean, adu dumolmo. Mang taki dakuragiblam da'adu ulgirel mul wase. El alt sils ekomdinge, mra'aila uriora ulgirela wasin, a reform, ma kyo'linget el mul wase. Ore seyi dakuragiblam determinenil wase, it's the best way for us to move forward. Tiri gyal ngara 3,000 samel adel malaya benefits, tiri gaya kumdaswe, ora kiomdasul wase, Social Security angar alel, make sure etirike tungusel girel malaringi. Even for sure, we will have to draw from a trust fund. Ndii, ekim molngitaringa mul wase, pota kawo dangel wase, sel supplemental ra first ma second quarter, agi momusper sel 1.9 million. Ling alsum mang ndi kate'asanga turnaround ra funding level, ya kufilal wase, sel la magimda 1.9, engirel magimda supplemental. Alsum mswadal momal molaringi, engirel kayingase'ul osi, wase kalamang mau'tu'v, rikerel mayl mutu olir. I think houla ya tial wase ngara over 2 million, 2.3 million, mobangel ngayegi, dha'ka'por agel supplemental, estila SS adirekamomalaya mosi agel ngara 3 million, el dimomale'ler tial, sel dimla ngaringi 50, plus a igal regular benefits ra arbekal. Seyi da somam el korra, oti'wase, kama magitira el filarangara, laki merengasulu ulkumdasu'ra adra belu. Hopefully dorang, se'wa understander wasin, dha'ha adel etil, romstir udo dar baby ra aten ting. If we don't have it, we don't have it.
Mogera ger alondalain, tila igil kurablam se chestri. Alastaim, dongo se kli'usakli'ya contribution ra employer ma employer ala triusogut, 2016. Esem lew'tur axual study, l'dekla am lew'tur sel 50. Nani au good reason, egadu, musakli. Board mna'kansidera, alba'y se chest la, sere drutlo mesra, angsakli'la contribution ra employer ma employer. Elmo kabir tila igil short for emul gorgi, instead of considering where we are financially ra blurbelau. Board enguramla, ngashubil, ngashukmogdongo sakli'ya contribution, enteral pasenta dosakli'ngi, engmo mit tila igil ni'der gimi'ul lamso'ile. Again, tial SS a diwa pension, aga'el ru PS viko, tigel adlu'urior, aharao tigel adunawitang, el ngaria accessing mora investment. That's how it is. Akumdaswe, alsum ngaria mal lungi justification, ra onsekli tial contribution ra al 7% ta employer ma employer, 10%, emo'aisa kama, l'asin tia'igil, kukume'asangel. El dosa 3 by 1, or 1.5, or 0.5, engmusakli'au revenue, seyi del mosmeser ngiling. We have to sort of look up all the options, ndi dha'ka dido si gaudod ra dasel government obal. Ling ngaringa program, diba'asta, dislocation mula'la, diskasyon mula', ndi kanga dha'gal dimre'edel nu, tigelai sel morninga revenue main. Akumdasang asse'edel, guk ngara se'edel contribution increase ra employer ma employer.
Kabonge, Mr Bai. Mal lungi li swelbe Senator. Tilagim sal malmo tong'okle masu'ur ngi, omesul waseng ra l'part tial Social Security, whether contribution or benefits, aboda adjust, engmot tali gibil mo sobakli a igahid le program. Ndii, sera lastwe, mlesaba amal participator sele workshop, blengu ndaktlinga Ministry of Finance, l'igera Social Security Reform. Mla'rsage'idi al lomasu'we, ngloblakatakal kulu wase, adda increase our contribution by at least 2% in the long running sobakli a igahid le Social Security. Osisi'utaim the change a igahid le retirement age, almost 65. Emerqonge rulia, adam engirel uriora at least 30, 35 years, seyi da ngia sobakli a Social Security in the long run. Of course, agel mildungor sel workshop, the recommendation, ndi pace ra axual studies, mlam katmo'kl, l'girela Social Security. Alsum mang dha'ka do, timre'edel ngua change or make some changes, engsabi ela system, l'mre'edel chiburer ra di, mre'edel time. So, ngurada dha'gal swakal kulu wase, l'merteng etmurgamil wase, mongosi'ya contribution. Ling sel tongosi'ya contribution, eng affect ra roku'ul urior, mal mutra business, mang momaringa tira, ndii seyi dia reality. Ng'atshakal kuk murgo, l'merteng etmulu wase, ta adjusta benefit, le cost of living, adimral murgo. Ewa'igel luloyo chairperson etmulu wase, recipient of Social Security, amla arama audu dir, l'guk attera tel ngakli, mesel bodo awaser el moge'grei, eng affect tirtir. Tia'ha mal meringul urior, ndi agi mal di somam el mutel merengasulu, kulu wase, ndiro kaukanga insidel open dialogue between us, l'ngal girel makaluriora osi gaur ngil, el solusyon al morte. Maybe ndi dha'gal permanent el solusyon, but solusyon, l'tal gibil guri ngi ak problem, ndi dha'gal mre'edel motu mal assisto. Sulam.
Tial SS ra, up to 30, agem ne 3% contribution. Yes, then, do lidere ma Senator De Ligue tra grada la 29, anspanso ra bedra onewa lolbi, edilim ma'mas by 1% until it's stopped at 6. So, it took four or five years, limit seyi. Akora di nyutial roder sheling, kaushel wasin 2% ta, abora se chestri ra axual al mastadi. Ndii, vidu re'hatu wits, tensiyar kuk mur 1% tra next year, hepp% tra following year. Kythu amutaisar ngeter gibil komutir, wits seyi del somiu. Ndii, ndi dha'gal se'edel, we have to be decisive. Ndha'gal se'edel madaktla, kama magiramil ngani sel poli'ikal wir, kama'mil sobakli tian, direk ngani sel poli'ikal wir, kama'mil si'tianga momil. Gumi'ul, ndirek ngani'aw response, wits tiri gumi'ul, support tel kama'mil wase, dhalil tia'igil, eti'igil asse'edel dhalil incrementally. Ndii, dimul metir kama'm, lese lawmaker, ma president, nding ngungil, nding kera girel support, l'mla support tel gumi'ul kama'm ra adra belu, ndii mal klawul gul, adu mesra increase na contribution. The moment we say, abi'ikta shobai, abi'ikta dan kleara, ndii waise, with example, we took the bullet, a there olbi, a personal tax reform. Same money impacting American, ndi dha'gal bal urior, it takes two years to implement. May gasp, wadu mul waise, nding, we have got to make hard decision, seyi dha'gal, ndi dha'gal dil, from here to plus 2%, tokogid la mesra incremental annual basis, l'sobakli'ya SS. Sulam.
Ak mal agree with you, Senator. Seyi dia mle number, mle recommendation or sel workshop that we attended, ndi like you said, se'edel gradually, magi tokogid el increase ngi, mang dha'gal sal mal affect ra roku'la. Kabonge Senator.
Will swel, l'qodi okeri ga'igil, agote enteral, enteral total retire sel mala benifits tial sils. Rough, rough number. Ela tial segil 3,800, tial tir adra ngoda belu.
15% retire ya adra ngoda belu.
Adra ngoda belu.
Mal garei.
Mang, ede di'sel domes tial overall employment aburbelau, enteral percent adra ngoda belu, gantribute el mortal system.
50%. Elang mal split 50/50.
50/50. Belgula kuna sing, clo number adra ngoda belu a gantribute, ndi dha'gal bol realize, agel benefits, full benefits el morte ra seloritar, malu bete momre'gal urior. Mostertir a, dha'gal richa retirement age, tira kuk paral. Meselabonge it most likely ndi dha'gal ul realize, igahid. El asse'idi da diregal olbi ralulua omeser ngil ta ra, axual study selorur ngi't, marur ngil based tial overall population ra adu gantribute. Andi ndi axal sur kumasasela, do they do actually take that into account, or calculation ra, l'mlasent tial percent tigegidel members, gantribute, amo dha'gal realize seyi del benefit ra tir. Mang akumdasese'akl, girel mo, mda'ngalik, masing mal wangara, lungel seyi del while savings sel mora program, as a result, tigegidel, nanpalaon citizens. Akumesa tial au'ur el 3,8, medil osisi'ua, klungel ngim tial, sel klungela membership ra pension. Pension angara 2,000, almost 3,000, this morning, t'lo'asak, l'maseng ngaria akme'ral 2,000 madar ngir, l'ore'ritam mla pension. La'atirge almost 100% tira adre belau, al ngaria adra ngoda belu ta di adra micronisiam ala FSC. Mang belgula kumaseng mal close seyi del wal, tial la savings l'do realize ngi, as a result, tia'igil adra ngoda belu, uriora gantribute el mora system, ndi dha'gal bol realize, igahid el benefit ra retirement. Mang kora question kumaseng, nse'edel momda'ngalil au'uruk, kumaseng mal wa'ta'itang, awaklungel angara seyi del while savings.
Oh, albo nga Senator Songo.
Administrator say gida l six months se vailo eh mang stop. Ndil suguma gara return eh mail ngariya talakaila temem oming la muttel kikinalo oming. Alsum gara return eh mail muttel mirailing another six months. Ngal how long is the residency eh guruk rekanseidere till ayidere.
Ala amal diwa say om toder belao. When you're outside of Palau, you only allowed the six months. Ala ambay chela. Di oming siswe belal kei, eh guruk kalmutan bo malari.
Oh di blel one week. Oh ulmak maloka se chel reset. Hal mang mangaranga, how do you define a cell reestablishment ra residency in gobaga ade? I think that's what I'm trying to say.
I think it's like sel lole mentioner ya chair. You have to have some form of resident visa kerbelao. Either work permit, kabaila, sponsor, ngariya sponsor, keinvestor. Those are form of proper visa and ngariya gida rela. Mang sabel mirail le five years ago, ten years ago mirail eh emla muttel return back. Emla muttel me kerbela ngar work permit, emla six team mang bo malari retirement.
Se emma return back just so that you can actually malartel SS rao?
Gira ngariya residence, gira ngariya permit rao. They know cell omer bela, bo ngariya permit rao, kerbela emla six team, gumi apply. Di tal tourist peace ta, ta lo riore.
Di akatala sur gumi.
Diya, angal alha mang.
Mang, um. Sel, although mesatel actuarial study gumi we say ra twenty eighteen, emla twenty twenty. Eh ya, a level ra contribution amal di osisiu. Mbay kal, l benefit sa mirail morabap. Mang, ngora. Mang gira dal rebalance ra system. Abai, ik questiona, adiregal mal klotut lela wasay. Kom karange tel contribution, tel benefit formula, adiregal dekal sal. L accelerate tel klungela benefit el mirail morabap. Ling, belgula kmasay. El altaime we don't contribute enough. Mang al suguma benefit formula di continue di mirail morabap. Eh gida gira dal di increase tel contribution rate ra. Abai karra, il cats upper tel klungela benefit el gida perengi. Ma komdaseng giriwal mal mo mesangal wasay kom karange eh fine tuner tel system ma. Ametmo ma matov daqme dal osisiu. Sel guruk bo ngariya variance, eh investment asap el cover eh guruk. Mang, um. Di komde galaseng makaranga om balance serengi, nding, um, say gida l, tei dal workshop. Eh etokora masao ra inflation adjustmental backward, ma inflation adjustmental forward. Di sel gume say geng wal lutel accelerate tel klungela benefit el mal mo msi si el malamya. Ma questiona say mang malte langa sebe edel afforderengi. La sel gume serengi ngora wel soal moat tel pension. Kada dimle increase ah, ah benefits eh, eh di deka the increase ah contribution el morapointe we're emla mo dekal sebe ed. Mang, ngmal giriul mesangal wasay, magarange kada return cell sebe edel afforderengi. Le el suguma pension amal morabap, ma SS amal morabap, ma tax amal morabap eh. Entas soal kerbela, alsum guma malara thirty percent ra salary or forty percent ra salary ra at. Mang, um, gira dal lo mes terro gira l economy, entas sebe edo omes ra SS. Because la ikadi tov ra osisiu el ipangela at. Ma gi, eh, al suguma. Akavalmenta le ngariya income tax, ma social security, ma pension. El tov ra ma insurance, medical insurance, sel tov ra di osisiu idip. Ma ulsel dula seem increase ra contribution rate el mor nine percent, akwaseng mal dekal sebe el. Other bela mo tirik kerbela, and you know wasay we have options. Ki sebe edel mirail mo riore ra travel we, el with higher minimum wage. Mang, akmo de galasay it's a. Teliket balance ra wasay kada makarange eh achieve or sell sustainable. Mang, ah mal klot important, ah di regal giriul omes ra benefit el olariya at. Dekal sebe edel increase ra benefit, el la ka increase ra contribution rate. Makadiregal giriul mesang ah benefit rela ngal wasay, sebe edel funderengi al ubendia. La sum guma setra benefit el ngalakla ra sebe edel funderengi. Eh we know wasay eventually we have to find money somewhere. Mang, ngungiral bo ngia, ay say hile aromatic cost of living adjustment. Di komdaso wasay mal gira l subject el mora review ra board. Ma actuarial study waseng sebe iwo l absorbengi ndia. Dekal sebel di aromatica formula eh la ka actuarial review ngima. Ah assessment ra board, el waset yang sustainable el mo ira. Mang, agigidamle kurakonsunor nga ra sel proposal r tir. Nding, ngungila the modernize. Nding, ngidilakal bol awanaira ipangela, gida ipangela talwa ipangela marigela print up trillions of dollars. It's very different. Mang, ah, ulnitamukomo, sel obam finalize serengi eh chairman eh gom. La muttel kurama lo mes say gaidel lo ura gumi wasay kada makarange talgibal mo kayuke da. Ay gel motov da ma ay gel metmo. Eh di regal mal depend ra economy, kela sel mo mes ra ngaysa, ndika sebe iwo la waser, sel eng mal aaroid. Makadongul bakal mora twenty twenty, twenty nineteen. Eh di regal deka de galasay, tel ra ra recovery tel muttel mora level ra twenty eighteen ma twenty nineteen ma twenty twenty. So, it's not an easy job. Akmo de say, maringala, mang akmo daseng ngungila talgibal conservative. And then alsum kada recuperal fasted adjust. Ra, adabay tongul morabap, bo dtril opal merio, lendika atal gongel wasay moa benefit el hal merio. It's gonna be very hard. Sula. Albo by chairman.
Well do, ah chair eh, the past ten years eh. Kuradi akri membel wasay, SS board, mama nispentam laas ah benefit in anyway. So that's part number one. Mbay gama merolbi, tokoni ngaal malu doob tel SS fifty fifty, uh should be blame. Oh, ndi ere, it's warrior under the bridge. Kei da president emla gongela say dumul hundred tel boheng stay there. Kado sega aldo dal tirin. Ade ishuraga, sel statement del dilile, tiak mal diwa pension. Since kada nga ra di fine benefit form of system. Eh ada lo at twenty thousand, employer and employee contribution. Eh after a three or six years emlaqman, eh gira gakkei, eh gira mangarangi. Eh ma, eh abii laakkei muttel mangarangi. How again we start the bleeding segi the situation? Segi da lang abai ma di, le ngarmadaf, el experience serengi da pension plan, mil tel system alda garangi. Tel system alda garangi, akmo la say, kadi lo at sheral amount, te sel bo six team retire. Eh kadi malayl, di malayl, antir yudai. Makamlaqma, omlaa, mal akavalment, eh ma di, nganiab imel kei. Ah inobi goes may ma, mayda di da sen, iksak di da sen thi. Teki ilanga, ah pension. Adama kadi al estan two thousand, ngima akavalment, te nyakkei ma hundred thousand. Eh ma di, adala kal muttel kei, imazala kal muttel malay gal, eh, el din. Mang segi di abli ding. Segi di abli ding, eh adra pension gumi kase, winit twenty million, reskama ma giltekei tel yang, adabans. Ela giltekala SS. Mang sey mo mes serengi. Eh ade only fast way to do it, talgibal sorot yang, mtesla contribution. Eh mergo stopa gai gida l a, wukpesel la, wasay tregel adal, mo retire. De da haeretir ra five years ago emla la. Le bo ra bessel system al di wa gilal go, se me ina bo ra gi ngara pension. Di rola, di rola el mo ma, ma gel, la lai, el stop. Le la, we going to be face it twenty, twenties from today. Le, ndika alsebe edel fix it yang, ade rola mo emel di ra ilki ga gil. Tel system alda garangi, tel define benefits. I'm sixty eight years old, eh bo kattal bo la uro, iklotakkei. Kudim eimerakla, amlaqma i gel tila. Damso another two hundred tel show eh. Ni ma kuigai gida ling, eh gai da ba gira dal omes. Eh tral, lo final solution el mo, oh, oh help not overnight. Ngin kada kora incrementali, kada, the helper ngile. Tel, eh gal anfandi, eh bi, ti gira gil se mo jeroh, kulu luwur gumi. Ngin gira l at least eh, deka bol over thirty percent ra total value ra, eh flalo. Tom de galasay, gira ngariya ling, that's how, that's how retirements are, SS pension.
Dia, maringala say, ah social security, ah dekal sebe mo define contribution. Ling, social program, gira dal gukomdas serengi el talgibal go da. Kabonge, mister Lu, kodal tangkura sebe emma smo.
Ya kura, Senator tabal mang asakura, heen gumi akte sakto aidoo. Akmo dasa taraktelik ma tarara, se edel, akmo dasa mes serengi tel eh, retirement aids. Eh di increase serengi el mo, ah, talu kosi, kuro bap, ndiakasi, eh la adal, continue contribute. Mang dekal din, lo ngasa tel, tel. Nse edo kosi arigila, adam, mal moel mal contribute, tel diro albo la eh dekal walai. Segi da tarra, diskutiv, desegon deko de la, dia.
Albo by Senator Songo.
Eh, um, segi dal guk, um, kom gora, lo mentioner ya Vice Chair. Bay il kase, ngora dekal swad al brut r tirgal oredi tangariya achasta. Ya da du kase, tregel two years out, ah, el mo, galil se edel, we achasta benefit r tir. Malakal, ndirga kal bol olariya, ndirga kal bol osos segi. Mang achasta tregel two or three years out, tregel eh di rag, emla retire. Eh di we achasta serengi, eh oral el mo. Eh tregal oredi tangariya, amal goramla, obligate ay gel udu di re, eh Vice Chair bay. Galil gora se edel, dekal ganchider se, eh tral, sum sum social program bo di bol, sooselil da ngara klingo.
Sel, last two gai ki marcel workshop eh Senator Songo Bawi. Ek, uh, tilungasix sel recommendation nga wasay makarange kada help al improve our social security. Ek, ah, gai gida l recommendation akmo la senda da change ra contribution. At this time, my personal opinion, eh, maringa, maringa dolongas, er sen, one, two percent. Ade gume sa ra, social security sebe edel mega changes serengi. Eh, talgibal sobaklil, omangatel time, ado omes er sel ula surviving spouse. Eh meronge, ma earning test. Ma egaidel eh, oy, egaidel tu. Ma dependent child. Le egaidi ya, om gom kada talgibal lo mes eh meronge achasta. Eh kada talgibal, l rulli mang mo talgibal giga rea, ododal tu. Surviving spouse, ak mel gongi, el altaime, al suguma, ka surviving spouse, el below ra sixty years old. Eh gomalara benefit rao at sixty percent. Sum andi ka ngalke, gomalariya at sixty percent. Di sel mricha sixty years old, eh gomo entitled for retirement benefit plus hundred percent el surviving spouse benefit. Mang, om gom kada madaduura, tregel oredita malariya, talgibal maringala. Mbay il asaw edel achasta serengi, el giri tregel mirail may. Mal suguma kada mal moel, mal wasendian gira dal di ngariya dual beneficiary, me the relil di sixty percent. Mal sebel la, social security, lor kadi sel, uh, uh, forty percent, eh guruk ngulm sang awandaat. Eh meronge, earning test. Social security, ah, encourage ra adal mo sixty years old, el di mal moel malo riore contribute. Di sel om retirem contribute. Sel beginning ra next year, ngariya aromatic recalculation, ma gel, el tax el blem hara, el ma social security. Ah increase ra benefit rao. Me el altaiming three thousand, mal suguma, uh, kamsura, three, ah, ngarbaba three thousand ra quarter. Eh kasa subject to earning test. Ngara recommendel wasay kada lower segi dal earning test, el di talgibal merio. Mang yes, um, deka the tax ah benefit ra, uh, uh, ro riore, malar tel benefit. Di at least kada help ra, ah, social security. Eh sel surviving, uh, dependent child, ah, lekun sang ang gaidel eh administrator, mal gukel so di.
Eh Chairman, um, eh gai, eh gai gida gora uldas, se kada makarange sopakil. Even don dekal swad al tax ra benefit, nding gira dal mal ngul mora practical. Ka sel obam seera, uh, adarha farao, emla mo kusaya, el ado emtekerengi. Mang gira l achasta tel benefit rao. Ndita bay belito, kle elang, kidatel ngatiang, el tregal ngalgal elang el, eh ngakamlaastel kurugoi akwasay ngariya. Average, era anga, uh, three ngal gir, eh haya eta ngal, eta ngalkei. Mail angal eta ngalkei, redil, among eight hundred. Maybe it's small, but what if a clue me one NYC? Eh ganga it up. Eh gai gida gil, eh sel doora, amal ulas, ah, surviving benefits, eh ngobi tir el, el sixty? Ndika al gira l ngalakka hundred percent, sel, um, um, tiamla, ngalakka tel hundred percent el ul malariya. Uh, it, it's a social, at least eh di mo, mo base el benefit ringel, ne di sisters spouse rao. El mangasola dalang klip. Eh gai gida se edel omes eh achasta, le elang, um. Ngobongel tei gida, gida muttel misadak NCD. Kado kotel din, namo magi garel at, eh mosme, eh emona disability, el a disability, tel ma ma hundred three. Telga tregel, tregal kabol sixty rekri, tregal forty five para kri remla benefit el al sins. Eh treganga most of the time, etamora taiwang, eh mora huriping, eh morgele, metanousepia resources ra health insurance, el atangara SS. Metangatel social program, and these are two social program. Mang, tel number amal morabap. Mang gira dal namo achasta sel surviving spouse, sel dependent benefit. Say da hor on, a oni, te elang, ndil wasay, blood agree wasay kada mal a hundred tel mortir. Andi ngil, ndi gira das biga udo dal moswi SS, eh gira ngariya gradually kada wind them outra system. Uh, eh ngakor ulundasasi, oy, beret tinggu bo trielaang, legi mal mo soy sebra reforma. Magi bo ra refor, ngoma motel giba kapakla at. Andi suguma mang mo gora, ah, ma mo ngia isuringi, ndiaka problem li SS sebe el. Achasta, eh al ben, um, three terole, ngariya la, gira dal mo ko pa. Di isure gama melang say, uh, kada ngara, al sela gora talibel, mal, ituta economy. Eh fundera, gida, ah, the last several years, segi bo oldi dro ringil supplement ra benefit. Eh laang, kada ngara, kada di start, eh ngara six million, soal mo nine million. Mal klot, klot udo di gipo multov da ringi. Akmo de gumi amla na kofal fifteen million eh. Eh gom, gobi omalu utel rogil government, kama di omalu utel gal three thousand beneficiary. Eh se aklungela ododal gibo molariya trust fund. Segi da gwa swad al uwa iserengi, hopefully, torrent sarada matomo mdegi, gitarogui el mo olingi tel alulonge. Eh gilolongi ta, aboru drangan amal giriul mo kanseide. Eh gosuguma maling, tel one point nine, amal giga re, giga re. Eh gi, ni ask, ke, titu mal ngil suguma mre la, November first, ma December first. Kom gora amri au do, sel lo sikro la besel udo de, ah dang, sula.
Maria Kametrae, Adachi.
Oh, ndiakan, mal ngilitasi, Senator Se. Ngora swad di do el mor segi dal, sel segi dal tel supplemental ngariya, se mla molla. Mang dekal din, magimda ra next year, elang momla moalong, mesel funding el two point three, ah, momla moel, additional mo. Move, ra fund, fund, ah, SS amo funderengi, usi ra ododal segi dal, two point three. Mang, awil, magidirek, le, le, ask, seada nganil wasay, bl, achasta, tregai gida, surba, tikai gida ngalgal. Malakal olale, te wa bol hundred percent, sel bol hundred percent, ting segi. Mang, although the one point nine, uh, um, di ngoy gida mo, margin. Ling, sel additional supplemental, ah, omu ra margin, moel ba dosiga ododal gira. Ling, ma awidro ra klot, ododal ra fund. Eh mal moel mranik, sel, di merong, mal moel malinga la. Iden, kada mo, muttel change ra la eh, wuk ngodiye, ngi, mengo dekal bol waisei. Or, gira dal losiga, lela ododal, mo teker segi dal. Eh ya dekal mkit, ah, do ngase, or, aden gira do ngase, ndi. Legena, muttel mal mo ngil war, se gumi ya, amada dal, ngaduura blum. Mal gira, adal mo understand, wasay ngiri, ay gal, ay gal social service ah olngaseu. Um, it's supplemental, mo olngaseu, ndiakal sel ba al, paam, ngi da, am, edukunge bo mlangal mekmo ngakamo funder. Tel, tel entire family rigi dal, ngiri, tregel ngariya olngaseu, lse iba ododal. Mang, gay ngaseu ay gal, social service ra after ra, rigim. Ndina ra adra blu, omdas wasay, ndiak, akui taere, hetira teker ngalgal di mo waisera, klangar ngalgarakubri or, ndiyan di al waisei. Ngi dal mo gregik len, oy, ngariya basungu du mangaranga, ndi ngiri dal ngariya dole ewek rengi. El mo omli, regi dal sel damadeye, et enga ngon, gosugida ling supplemental. Mang, kadi rogul gay ngaseu, te obukti, adra ongresa, ma president, ma social security olngaseu ra ktonar gar after, eh, ti amal maringala. Mang, komdasu, eh ngiri dal omes segi da, ra blu, omes, orengseng, kadi rogul gay ngaseu. Mal moel ma program regide, gosugita ra blu rogul aden ma. Kwadi omes segi dal tei dal eleven tas twelve, wasay mal, mal klo impact ringil dimlakada, fe sangal. Mel, kukomsuva ngariya, ndi dimlagi mi include ngang, ngang lolal. Mangariya, omsu, ndi wuk dimlak, eh, include eleven tas twelve. Mang, you know, wa kada short, tel da gimo dek, mo gada mo ngutel, ododal gera. Di segi da Senator.
Sula ngi, Mister Adachi, um. Mang, uh, gi, ulundasal wasay sel la bol, el tei dal, sel reform. El, el bol sebe iwo l replace say gaidel rogui el supplemental benefit al sel se. Mang, awulmat, meru ringil wasel bo ngia, inflation adjustment, el mo aromariga al sel, uh, system. Eh, ndi segi dal on tik, bol se, el bol sebel subject to actuarial study, ma approval ra board. Laal dil formulaal di aromariga mas, ling mo deka dotir. Eh, etasemtame, eh, agidiregal mal olngit, akmo la say, om, ngul suobi. Sel proposal ringil minimum amount, sel ngar sel formulaal minimum amount. Uh, lakam rulli, mal morabaper sel ngariya elang. Ling, ndiregal, ngwaya bol base, mal suguma kom dikil ngutel base el mal morabap. Ndiregal mo deka dotirik, tel klungela, uh, escalation, eh, ikad rogui el, el benefit. Eh segi dal minimum, mang makaral cover, uh, parangalga. Ling, na ulman social program, atir gal gira l, sebel, el, el cover, uh, al vulnerable, el members ra community. Dekal sebel di tir, el, el take care at di. Ma, uh, Administrator, amle mentioner ah, NCD. Se di regal makno impact da ringi, mera, uh, tel, ayga rogir, el roguiel benefits, especially, ra ngalgal mal motokal, deka parents r tir. Mang, social cost, el di regal, um, alsum ngiri, ngsebi ul considera ngi, lilya. Eh ngul loyang, lilya, kal benefit el direct, el mora ngalke, eh, dekal by help. Eh, eh, the consider, eh gai gida l guk, uh, mora, uh, ngal retiree, mang ngal, lamosme, el retiree, lo laya ringya spouse. So, I don't know, ngiriul mo ngilo mes serengi, eh, eh, diya di, formulaal sebe edel, eh, make sure eh, acceleration ringi, yaramutel wasay. Ndika balgula, rortel wasay, le, ndiakas, edel lo, takadegi al suguma, uh, trajectory ringi, yaramutel. El guk paga rort ra, uh, klungela income. Um, a problem, sel, al gume sert tir, et, sel trajectory l, lo mes serengi, yah, waya, talgibal awanaira, giga re el economic waygi. Le, waya, angil example, uh, sera the increase ra SS rate from six percent to seven percent. Yah, waya PPUC board, amle approve ra five percent increase salary, emra rogul ada PUC. Ah, impact da sel, salary increase, sel di moa ada PUC. Al suguma komo, ospe ringil measure, sel change in salary ra rogil SS. Eh, increase ra, sel dal dula sing two percent tel salary increase average every year, sel increase, sel mo three, four percent. Om apply, sel mora beneficiary increase, et, tel amal klot increase, el, el di mergoal di doal tage da gari ngi, el, le, ndiakal lutel merio. Eh gai gida giriul gora mo ngil mes eh, sel om fine tuner, uh, sel proposal, el pololus ra la, el talgibal. Ndika pol awanara, ulule, tokora mo, eh, lutel escalate, tel problem regi. Le problem regi da contribution el metmoa, eh giga re, tel di mirail motov. Mang, I guess eh gai gida, uh, problems al da trace eh, eh, malungil ngani tel review, makadokora, namo mdegi, uh, issues. Mel la amal ngar aliwe board el mo, mesa proposal eh, eh, deka mo, deka mo balom sa olbi, le, leka ma, ma, kuknod, ah, dasuam. Eh gi olapal mora beneficiary, so ma ma bol batoka benefit r tir, mang giriul mo ngil balance serengi, raw era al merka ma. Mang, eh, I guess, uh, um, nama umili, kada namo kao tangeye, eh, oh, eh, magi malongit, talwasay, tido tirakli al la re la. Eh sel may sel, uh, reform, eh dal lutel, um, reforma system, et, tral di, el mo, something we can all live with. Ah dang, komal, sula ngi, albo by Senator.
Di, mal, di rest, eh menta, eh Administrator, l, do things, sel round my bed. Ah, gott, kada no masao ra, ra adal, gara SS, mla disability, tregel notatsat ora NCD. Uh, gida, mal ngatangat len, ngariya NCD funder gide. Eh tregel, ngariya, ala, le, irmar ka ten percent ra taxat go, mora NCD. Eh, 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 endra korere, sel udo da, amon. Tregel ten percent ra taxat go, ra eh, end of each quarter, amora healthcare fund. Ndiaki sal wasay, ngaram, ndiakas, eh, satododor gida. Awrengasal gumi, we namo mdeku, kasing, ade only revenue stream le gom. Ade contribution ra employer, ma employee, ma investment, eh gumi, ndiakangod. Mang, ndiaki sal, asing, ngaram, ndiakas, eh, edes, eh, ki, awrevenue stream el mora legora, eh, endra korer. Mbo do mesu, sel, taxat go, el moro, ulak moel waisei, eh, why twenty nine, ten, mndan ya gobit, eh, why twenty, twenty, mndan ya gobit. Eh, number three, most, eh, diakat tourist, eh, number three, the highest revenue, loga revenue kolekted, ra taxat go, el moro. Mang mal klot ododal. Eh, 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 akmo dasa, social security, should be able to get. you have to get part of it. If you want to improve it, it's not enough. The president is not enough. The tax is not enough. Every quarter. The pension is not enough. The disabled benefit. If you want to improve it, it's not enough. It's not enough. The revenue is not enough. It's not enough. It's not enough. The contribution of employers, employees, investment. It's not enough. It's not enough. It's not enough. Every quarter. It's not enough.
What do you think, Senator?
I think the last one, Senator. If you want to improve it, it's not enough. It's not enough. It's not enough. It's not enough. If you want to improve it, it's not enough. It's not enough. It's not enough. If you want to improve it, it's not enough. Thank you.
Your comments. What do you think?
I think the last one, your comment. Members of the trust team administrator. When it comes to social program, the most popular politician is local. It's not enough. It's not enough. It's not enough. If you want to improve it, the specific protect the program. The program is not enough. Politics. The political influence. The benefits. If you want to improve it, it's not enough. The programming is not enough. When it comes to trust, it's not enough. It's not enough. The formula is not enough. The minus. The important component is the pension. If you want to improve it, the formula will trigger adjustment. If you want to improve it, the politics will initiate adjustment. It's not enough. If you want to improve it, the program is not enough. If you want to improve it, we have to confirm. If you want to improve it, when it comes to discussion, we have to discuss. If you want to improve it, it's not enough. Sometimes you have to challenge. People have initiative. It's not enough. It's not enough. The change is not enough. Otherwise, if necessary, members, of course, most of them, they are members. They are aside. It's not enough. Sometimes it's not enough. If you want to improve it, it's not enough. The change is not enough. The beneficiary is not enough. The policy is not enough. Okay? Thank you. I think the Swiss is not enough.
Thank you. Chairman, I think the last one. I think the last one.
Thank you. Chairman, I think if you want to improve it, if you want to improve it, if you want to improve it, it's not enough. It's not enough. The Minister of Finance is saying it's a third of the national economy. If you want to improve it, self process. I think the ADB is not enough. I think the workshop last week. It's not enough. It's not enough. If you want to improve it, you have to request. It's not enough. It's not enough. If you want to improve it, it's not enough. It's not enough. It's not enough. If you want to improve it, it's not enough. It's not enough. If you want to improve it, hopefully, if you want to improve it, it's not enough. 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 If you want to improve it, it's not enough. It's not enough. Senator, I think if you want to improve it, politicians may make changes. Actually, I think the purpose of the social security is self sustaining and self financing. We have to improve it. We have to improve it. We have to improve it. If you want to improve it, it's not enough. It's not enough. If you want to improve it, if you want to improve it, if you want to improve it, it's not enough. Once we have discussed it, we have to draft the legislation. If you want to improve it, it's not enough. Compromise. It's not enough. It's not enough. It's not enough. How long? Hopefully, it's 1.9%. Second quarter, March. Hopefully, it's not enough. If the supplemental is not enough, it's not enough. I think it's not enough. I think the report is not enough. Hopefully, if it's not enough, it's not enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Administrator. I guess if you want to improve it, it's not enough. It's sustainable. It's sustainable at the rate it is now. If you want to improve it, the employer is not enough. If you want to improve it, it's important. If you want to improve it, next time, it's not enough. It's not enough. Thank you.